I'm going to call the meeting to order, it's two o'clock. And so this is Committee of the Whole Administration and Finance Committee. Budget meeting number two of the 2020 budget cycle for the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. And the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So I have Counselor Cameron and seconded by Counselor Hunter. Those in favor? It's carried. And the next item on the agenda is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this afternoon? Hearing none, proceed on. And the next item I have on the agenda is item number four, which is business arising from the previous Committee of the Whole meeting, if any. And I don't know whether anybody else has anything to bring forward, but I have one item, but let others go first. Anybody have any business arising? The minutes were circulated as part of this being package. So I'll raise mine, Business arising, which is on page four of seven. And on page four of seven, I'm bringing your attention to the motion at the bottom of the page, or close to the bottom of the page, where we were talking about the cellphone policy. And we have a motion that was moved by Deputy Mayor Deschamps and seconded by Counselor Cameron. The committee recommends that council expense reimbursement policy be reviewed to include additional clauses to address the thirty month, thirty dollars per month cellphone allowance as discussed. And I know that it does, the minutes don't show it, but I just wanted to highlight the fact that during that discussion, I'm sure that we signaled that the change in the council expense reimbursement policy, when it comes forward, would identify that thirty dollars per month allowance to be not a taxable benefit. In other words, it would come as an expense allowance, non-taxable. So I'm just raising that because it isn't reflected in the minutes. But I think it was discussed. And so if anybody wants to add to that, or anything coming forward from it, hearing none, I'm going to go on then to the next item on the agenda, which is item number five, which is action and information items. And the first thing that we had asked for was a review of revenues for 2020. And that's the first sheet that we have. Five A. And this review of revenues is essentially, as I see it, the same as we had on January the thirteenth, I think our meeting was, is it not? I don't think there's any changes, are there?
Yes, there is a change.
Do you see a change?
The second column.
Okay, where do you see the change?
Right here, the penalty and interest revenue. Okay, it's gone, it's gone from ninety-four thousand to one oh two thousand, one hundred and two thousand. A change of seven thousand, three hundred some dollars.
Well, just a minute now, I've got to find you where you are, because I brought my...
Page under your draft department budgets.
Oh, you're not on camera? No, no, we're on revenue right now. We're at five A on the agenda, which is just reviewing the revenue.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the sheet, 2020 proposed budget, that column, which is the third column here. Down the column, at the bottom, total revenue, seven million, five ninety-five.
Correct.
Okay, which is the same as we had on...
That's correct.
On January the thirteenth.
Correct.
Okay, so where's the change that you're seeing?
The second column, at the bottom. Seven thousand, five thirty-nine instead of seven thousand, five thirty-two.
Okay, so that's revenue, that's S, that's year, that's...
That's actual.
The second column is year-to-date actuals.
Yes.
Okay, well, yeah, so there's been some change in the actuals.
Yes.
Seven, five, three, two.
But the budget hasn't changed.
So maybe just to the treasure then quickly, so that's about...
Seven thousand...
Seven thousand. Well, actually, yeah, seven thousand difference in actual received revenue for 2019. Is there any source of that?
The change I would expect would be on the penalty and interest receivable. As Counselor Cameron indicated, that's, there was a difference. I think the last one was ninety some thousand, and this is one hundred and two. Imagine that's where the...
Sorry, I can't hear you. Okay, one hundred and two, is that what I remember?
One hundred and two is the final year-end number, but the number previous on, in the January one would have been prior to the, to the interest being added, for example.
Okay, so, okay, so that would be where the difference came from?
I would assume that's where it is, yeah. There's no change in the actual budget or value.
Okay, so, so we're looking at actual budget, budgeted revenue of seven million, five ninety-five, five twenty, based on current year's taxation rate applied to current year's, or 2020's assessment rule. All right. So that's a quick little review mounted there. So now, the next item on the agenda is a review of the capital summary. And that's item five B, and so on. Now, what I don't have, just with me in my hand, or as part of this package, is those capital lists.
The funding analysis sheet?
Should be in the...
Well, I brought the draft capital budget summary in detail. I'm assuming we're going to be looking at the same sheet, the same sheets, are we?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at the same sheets as we had before, on our January the thirteenth meeting.
Yes, so if we, if we look, if you open up your budget binders to the pink section?
Yeah.
Just 2020 draft capital budget summary in detail. The last page in that section has the overall draft capital projects, the funding analysis. It shows the source of revenue.
Okay, so there's two, there's two aspects to this then. The first three sheets are the issue, are the items, right? With the explanations beside them.
That is correct.
And then the third sheet, one called funding analysis, is basically the source of money.
That is correct.
Okay, so what is the purpose? What, what does the staff hope to achieve from this exercise that we're asked to do here now?
Well, what we're hoping, what we're hoping to achieve is deciding on, on which capital projects that we're, we're going to go forward with, and whether there are some adjustments with respect to utilizing some additional money from, from reserves or reserve funds, or those particular, answering those particular questions. And with the, the information item in five B, it sort of looks at some of the following projects, which, item number one is the fire department rescue van.
Okay, and the issue is that this purchase has already received pre-budget approval?
Correct.
And the draft 2020 budget, if we look at the funding analysis sheet, where is that van on the, on the budget analysis sheet? Fire Department capital?
Yeah, I believe, I believe it is the third one down, under Fire Department capital.
Okay, it's the replace rescue truck, right?
Correct.
And, and the cost is three hundred and forty-four thousand, six thirty?
Yes.
The, the, the budget presentation presumes that we're going to transfer seventy thousand from reserves, and take two hundred and seventy-four thousand from this year's taxation. The question that the staff is asking in this, on this page is, what additional amount would committee recommend withdrawing from the reserve to fund this purchase, if any? So I'm looking for discussion on that particular question. Two hundred and seventy-four thousand coming from...
Taxation.
Taxation. Now, what we don't, what I don't recall from the previous meeting is, did we have a balanced budget on our first presentation? Capital plus operating equals balanced budget?
No.
No, we didn't?
We didn't.
So the budget is far from balanced.
The budget is far from balanced.
Okay, so it might not hurt to just put this exercise in context. If we knew how far the budget was from being balanced, we know that we have fi, seven million, five ninety-five in revenues coming in. I recall from the previous meeting that we're projecting something like six million, two hundred and thirteen in operating costs, which in my mind would leave just a little over a million three for capital. And if I recall correctly, this budget is sort of anticipating about six...
Seven...
I got that wrong, go ahead.
There's about seven hundred and seventeen thousand more under capital for taxation-supported funding.
Say that again?
There, there's about seven, a hundred and seventeen thousand additional taxation-supported capital work. If you look at five B on the first page? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, but that's, again, this, this, this page is not really, this page is not really germane to the discussion, at least that chart. Because the chart doesn't show me where I stand with 2020. Total capital transfers from reserves, forwards, grants, et cetera. It just tells me, it just tells me what the difference is compared to last year, as far as it pertains to capital. Doesn't give me the whole picture. Revenues are this much, operating is this much, capital is that much.
Right, so, so in, in, in the capital section, what's, what's in the funding analysis right now is seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars more than what was in 2019 to take from taxation?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, not the, not the issue, but I understand. So to, so to, so to say to us that, that we need to... Does that say to us, I'll put it in the form of a question, does that say to us that we should be trying to find seven hundred and seventeen thousand reduction in this capital budget?
What it, what it, what it is saying is, as, as the capital portion stands right now, it would be seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars additional coming from taxation, which would be a substantial tax rate increase. So it would be determining which of these capital projects are, are go-forward in 2020. They're all, they're all a need?
Well, don't, let's not go there.
Okay.
Yeah, we understand that. The, the point is though, that it, it sets up the capital projects that we've got in front of us as separate from operating. And at this point, the operating budget has not been approved.
That is cor, that, that, that is correct.
Right, and the operating budget...
Yeah. The, the, the operating budget right, right now is about a one, about one percent higher than, than it was for, for 2019.
Well, can we get that, can we get a firm figure on that? I'm, I'm showing the operating budget, the net operating budget for last year to be five, three forty-five, two ninety-nine. I, I would, I need somebody to correct me here if I'm wrong with these numbers.
So, if I can, I'll defer to the...
And I got that from the, from the, from the January thirteenth meeting.
January thirteenth meeting?
What'd you get, Mr. Mayor?
Five point... Five million, three forty-five.
Yeah, five million, six forty-four.
I've, I've got five, three forty-five as 2019 actual.
Yeah, well, I had year-to-date actual, yeah.
Can I, can I intervene just a little?
Yeah, sure.
That particular actual was of, as effective of November twenty-ninth. If you look at the top of that particular report, it was, the report date was November twenty-ninth.
Okay, and what is your, what is your current number for 2019 actual operating?
I don't have that number to offer today. I, I was, we were really trying to concentrate on capital, because we were going to bring operating and have conversation about operating at a later date. We feel that the capital is where our, where the difference between our 2019 budget and our 2020 budget is. The eight, in that first report, the deficit was sitting at eight fifty-eight.
The deficit?
The amount of money that we need to fund to get to zero. We have a deficit of eight fifty-eight. If you look at that first report that you're referring to, page four, the proposed budget...
You're talking about the January thirteenth report?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so where am I on January the thirteenth?
On that summary report, the draft summary budget report, page four.
A minute now till we find it. Go ahead.
So there, we, we're showing currently a deficit of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Okay, now...
And if we, if we refer to our five B, if you look at the total capital funding that is decreased from 2019 to 2020, that's a hundred and forty-two. And you look at the, the increase in the taxation-supported funding of seven seventeen, you're pretty close to your eight fifty-eight. So that's why staff is pushing towards having conversation about the capital, because we think that that's really where the bulk of the overage, where we're not having enough money to support the additional capital.
Okay, but you're assuming that, that your operating budget will be approved?
No, we're not assuming anything, so...
Okay, all right.
We're, we're trying to have good conversation about the capital, because we feel that that's where the variance between last year's budget and this year's budget lies.
Okay, and so the number that you're urging us to look at is to try to find seven hundred thousand savings from the capital?
Correct.
Okay, and to find seven hundred savings from the capital, the first thing that you're asking us is what additional amount would committee recommend drawing, withdrawing from the fire department capital reserve to fund this truck that has already been approved? And that is in addition to the seventy transfer from reserve that the staff is already recommending?
I'll correct you on that, Chair. The, the seventy thousand is in the draft budget, because that was put in by council in the 2019 budget.
Okay, all right.
So we are just bringing forward the transfer that was into the reserves back out...
For that purpose.
As per council direction.
Got you, okay. All right, so the number we're looking at then is two seventy-four. That's the impact on the 2020 budget. That's the impact on the 2020 revenues.
Yep.
And you can, now what is, what is, and I think you tell us in the briefing note again, the balance in the fire department vehicle reserve is projected to be three sixty-four, three hundred and sixty-four thousand after the 2020 draft budgeted transfers in and out have been applied. That's the, how much are we proposing in our budget to transfer into that reserve?
Fifty.
Fifty in?
Mm-hmm.
And seventy out?
Correct.
Okay, so fifty in and seventy out. So if we just didn't transfer the fifty in, that'd be fifty savings, right? Well, let's say you around the table here. So, so if we transferred fifty in, transferred fifty in, well, let me have a look. You're recommend, you're saying that it would be three sixty-four after the transfers in and transfers out? I'm just trying to think, I can't do the, I can't do the math quick enough in my head. What is the net effect if I don't transfer fifty in?
You're going to be at three sixteen, or three, uh, three fourteen, sorry.
Uh, what, what's...
Because you're, you're at three eighty-four before we add the fifty. So if you take the seventy off, you're at three fourteen. And not adding the fifty, you're at three fourteen.
Um, can't, I'm not following that just quite yet.
So three eighty-four is where we're at the end of...
Just a minute?
Three hundred, three hundred and eighty-four is where we're at, at, at the end of 2019?
I got three sixty-four, my sheet.
No, that's at the end of 2020, projected at the end of 2020.
Okay, so where are we at the end?
At the end of 2019, we're at three eighty-four.
Okay, that's at the end of 2019?
Correct.
Okay, we're budgeting to put fifty in?
Yep.
And take seventy out, right?
Correct.
And that'll leave us at three sixty-four?
Correct.
All right, so if we do something different, right through, let's start with the three eighty-four where we are at the end of 2019. And, and we're going to take the seventy out, because we earmarked it for that, right? Instead of taking seventy out, what happens if we take a hundred and twenty out?
Are we putting money in?
So what hap, yeah, let's, that's, and to be honest with you, that's the way, that's the way county seems to do it. They seem to transfer money in and then out.
Right, so we're still, we're still saving, we're still going to do a negative, or we're still putting fifty thousand in, in the budget?
Well, let's put, let's just see what happens if we put eighty in.
Increasing.
Well, yeah, that, that, that hurts us.
That's going to be worse.
That's right, so, yeah, let's, let's not put any in.
Nothing in?
Put nothing in. That saves us fifty on the seven seventeen. And...
So then we're at three fourteen?
You, keep me on, on track here.
I think it's a lot simpler if we just keep the status as is. Have budget to take seventy out, have budget to put fifty in. That's, still leaves us, we, taxation's two hundred and seventy-four thousand cents. So we got three hundred and, three hundred and sixty-four thousand left in there. We've got seven hundred thousand, but we've got to find here someplace to not tax for.
Yep.
So why don't we just take an extra two hundred thousand out of the reserves towards this truck? Still leaves us a hundred and sixty-four thousand in there to start building on again for next, next year. Now we're down, we're only short five hundred and some thousand on capital.
Okay, and that, see, I find out just a little bit too rich for my blood on the first round. Can we go two rounds on this? Let's try it, putting nothing in and taking a hundred and seventy out. If we take a hundred and seventy out, we're at three eighty-four at the end of 2019. So we take a hundred and seventy out, what's that put us at? Two fourteen? Two fourteen, doesn't leave us much in there. But the hundred goes right against the seven seventeen, does it not?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because the seventy was going to come, so the hundred goes right against the seven seventeen.
Correct.
All right, let's, can we try that for the first round? Just to see what happens? That doesn't...
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, the treasurer is making these changes on...
Yeah, but he can't see it. I can't...
Turn behind you.
Yeah, but I can't twist and turn.
Can't chew and walk?
I can't chew and, I can't chew and talk.
We'll try and make it a little bigger for you. Any better, or?
I can see it now, but I can't, yeah, but I can't see the whole screen.
No.
No, that's, that, that's, that's the limiting factor.
So make just a shade, little, little touch smaller.
All right, simple, you just, but we just add into the budget here for sixty-five inch screen, or...
Okay, so where's, where's fire department there? Oh, there it is there, I see it now. So you're going to take a hundred and seventy out? So then due from taxation is one seventy-four?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to do this a different way, if you don't mind. Just bear with me. You started with three, took a hundred and seventy out. And that's going to be two fourteen in that. And now from my seven seventeen, I took off a hundred. And I'm at six seventeen. So you show six seventeen at the bottom there?
No, I will show eight, the, uh, one not, uh, show one eight ten instead of one nine ten. The seven seventeen is the difference between...
Yes, yes, right?
So...
Do you not show the difference?
Not on this particular sheet, no.
Okay, so where are you, what, what, what should I be looking at then?
So we're, we've adjusted that total to eight ten, one eight ten, instead of one nine ten. So instead of a million nine, we're at a million eight.
Okay, so it was one million nine ten?
Yeah, and now we're at one million eight ten.
And now we're at...
Twenty nineteen's number was one point one nine.
So...
Just shy of one point two.
Eight ten, eight seventy-five, okay. So that's as a result of the fire department truck. All right, so now, staff asks us the next question. The 2020 Recreation Department draft capital projects are fully funded by taxation. Does committee recommend deferring any of these projects or purchases? The balance in the Recreation Department reserve is projected to be one eighty-eight. What amount, if any, does committee recommending transferring out of the reserve to fund 2020 capital? So if I look at the recreation one, and I'm on the funding analysis sheet, I see one, two, three, four, five, six items. A pickup truck for thirty-five, Cardinal docks for thirty, Cardinal pool filtration system for seventy, Cardinal arena lighting for thirty-six, Cardinal arena dehumidifier for fifteen, and south center stove and fridge for nine thousand five. All of those to come from taxation. So now the commit, the coun, the, the staff is acting, asking two questions. Number one, which of these would we, would we see as priorities or not priorities? And then which would we fund from a, from a reserve which presently stands at one eighty-eight? So let's talk about which ones we might remove entirely. Any takers on that question?
I got one suggestion. For pickup truck there, this is the one we transferred over from the port eight years ago?
Yes. Two thousand and eight.
How old is the truck we got out there now, three years?
Uh, the truck that's at the port?
Yeah.
No, we just transferred it last year, two years?
This year, just years ago?
This year.
Twenty nineteen.
It's just one year old.
Well, no, the truck isn't one year old, the transfer is one year old.
Yeah, no, he got the truck at the same time.
Okay, but anyway, the truck that we're replacing is a two thousand and eight truck that was transferred to the port in two thousand and twelve, as I understand it. Okay, so it's a two thousand and eight truck, which makes it eleven years old. And I, I know what you're probably thinking, can we transfer another one from the port?
Yeah, we just got it.
And, and throw that?
He just got it.
Well, I, I understand. Well, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, do we really wanna say it out loud?
We got the port paper.
I didn't hear. But it is, it is a consideration, that's for sure. That's one consideration. Any other considerations along here?
What about the dehumidifier?
What, what is the story with the dehumidifier? What did we find out from an analysis of the dehumidifier that was decommissioned from the old arena? We asked to have that looked at.
Turn it over to Mike.
I was just advised this on Friday, and I can say that the, we do have an old, an older dehumidifier that came out of the Cardinal rink, which was, I believe, fifteen years old at the time. And it's, uh, it's been outside, it's been stored outside for the last-
Ken, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
It's been stored outside for the last six years, and I, the thought was never to use it. But we just had no place to, to get rid of it at the time when we decommissioned the old Cardinal rink.
So-
It's not a, to me, it's not worth getting, getting everything and using it.
Okay, so, when we don't have stuff, when we have stuff like that, we really should get it up, get it gone. It should be gone, counselor. Why do we need another dehumidifier for that new arena?
Well, just, um, the last, uh, three summers, the, the seasons have been extremely hot and are getting warmer. And there is times when just having it, it would only be used during spring and August, September, ice mountains. Wouldn't be used throughout the, the regular season. Basically, September through, um, the humidification in there is acceptable. But it all depends, um, what the weather's like in, um, April, May, and August. The, the more rain, it's harder on the system. And the thought was to obtain one of the newer ones from Prescott and have that installed, and it would only be used during the peak warm seasons.
That's your, this is your area of expertise, not mine. Well, no, but so, why can't we get Prescotts?
That's what, that, that's what that price would be. Getting Prescotts and having the electrical work done to get it installed.
The fifteen thousand is coming from Prescotts, is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that's the cost it would be to get the one from Prescott and have it hooked up, electrical hookup, have a platform mounted.
Yeah, I realize that. So what, how old's it?
Um, I believe there's, is, um, eight years old, and it hasn't been used for the last two. It's just sitting there.
So it's ten years old? And we got one there for nothing at fifteen, you're saying, but we don't know if it's any good?
The, the one that is out at the, the old, excuse me, from the old Cardinal rink was on its last legs when we decommissioned the, the facility.
Get in.
Have, have, have you had discussions with Prescott on, on whether that dehumidifier would be available to us?
We did have initial conversations, uh, Debbie and I met with Matt back in, I'm gonna say it, October, September, October. And there certainly was an appetite for that discussion to continue on. But I don't know what the circumstances are now. Then it was, but-
Go ahead.
So, we, I'm just struggling with the, we don't have anything that's up to date. I mean, it's the end of January, I, it being presented in a budget for this year, I'd like to know if it was actually still available and if, if, if at all that number's even accurate. We're looking at cutting something that, or discussing adding something that might not even be available.
We can reach out to Prescott again. I don't see that it wouldn't be, but I can't one hundred percent confirm that.
So, uh, so making the assumption that it is available, is fifteen thousand reasonable to do the installation? Well, that's installation too, isn't it? Taking it off, that's installation and all, so. Yeah, what's a new one worth?
A new one, just a new, uh, would be thirty thousand. That's just, no, just, just buying it.
Okay, so I'm looking at things like the pool filtration system, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm really looking at things, I'm looking at the fact that we're, that we're now faced with finding, uh, six hundred thousand dollars reduction in taxation. So I'm prepared to say that things like the pool filtration are gone, the arena lighting, the changing of the lighting at thirty-six is gone. So I'm prepared to say there's a hundred there and let the other two items, uh, leave the other two items in until the next budget, until the next round of discussions. And I'm just prepared to put that on the table, like, right away, real quick for a hundred and move on with this discussion.
What are you deleting, Mr. Mayor?
I'm deleting the full pil, the pool filtration system at seventy and the arena lighting at thirty-six and calling it an even hundred.
And then what about the thirty-five for the truck?
Well, I'm gonna leave that, I'd like to leave that for now. I'd like to float that idea in the appropriate places without it being imposed. I think it's more diplomatic if I can put it that way.
One suggestion there. I think your pool filter is a pretty critical thing if we're gonna operate a pool. Down there in it, we've replaced Johnstown two years ago, we had to replace Johnstown. This one's an older system than what the Johnstown was, was. At seventy thousand dollars, uh, why could we not take at least half of that to the, uh,
Reserve?
Cardinal, no, out of Cardinal Reserve Fund there from the hydro.
No, no, no.
What's that reserve fund sitting there for? It's supposed to be used for stuff in Cardinal?
Yes, for the people of Cardinal. Okay, 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 I know, I think, I think the broad general discussion here, and I don't want you two, you chaps to get into head to head on this one. And I'll tell you why, it, it, uh, I think we got, we all recognize that the pool is used by the entire community, and I think that's-
Nice.
Uh, so I, I'm just asking, can we, can we agree that, can we agree on that and move on? Because otherwise, we can get into a long debate about that. And, you know, I, can, can we entertain something like, can we entertain something like thirty coming from the, uh, recreation department's reserve account, which is at a hundred and eighty-eight? And the other, the other question is, could we entertain something like, instead of taking the entire seventy from taxation this year, taking thirty from taxation and putting it into a reserve account for that specific purpose next year? I mean, we only gotta get through another eight weeks of pool operation, or ten weeks of pool operation this year. And, I mean, the system is, it, well, let me put it this way, it was operating at the end of last year's season. Uh, if we took thirty from taxation, put it into a reserve account specifically for that purpose, we'd be reducing the impact on taxation by forty, at least we're starting someplace here. Looking for other ideas here. Come on, guys, can't, you can't sit on a fence here.
Well, if you wanna keep your pool operating, I think we've got a recreation director says this thing needs replacement, or you might not have a pool operating for the summer. So we take some out of reserve and put in it and go ahead and tax for, for-
Go ahead, get in.
My question, yeah, I, mine's more, mine's more for Mike. Mike, we've got a list of things on, on the recreational capital, unless I missed a meeting. Uh, I haven't seen a presentation from you as to, uh, why these need to be replaced. I know we looked at them and stuff, but, and, and I read the, uh, you know, the, the report that was there for the filtration system, but I haven't heard you speak to, to it. I haven't heard you speak to why the Cardinal Arena needs, uh, new lighting. And I hadn't really heard why the Cardinal Arena needed a new dehumidifier either. So, um, before I make any choice on that, I'd like to hear from, from you, right, uh, directly, instead of just a few words on the paper.
Yep, sure. Um, I'll start with the, uh, arena lighting. Um, when we had the new arena, um, constructed back six years ago, um, we had the same lights, uh, put in that we have at the Spencer, had at the Spencer Arena, which were an induction light. Those lights now are no longer available, and, um, we have two units left. After those units, if one of those happens to, to blow out, then we won't have any replacements, uh, to, to do those. So that's why we converted this, in two thousand and nineteen, we took the induction lights out of the Spencer Arena and put the LEDs in. The induction lights are not available, we have gone to the very end of our sources trying to find replacements, and we don't have any left. So, um, that's why that is in there. I know it's a, it's a newer facility, but, uh, with the technology of the lighting system, the way things have changed, are really out of our control on this one. So, um, that is, that's it for that.
Mike, if I can just stop you there for a sec? So we took out the, uh, the existing lights in the Spencerville Arena, what, what did we do with the, uh, induction lights that we took out that were so good?
They're not the same, they're, they're not the same wattage as the ones in, in Cardinal. So they're not, we're not able to use those ones in Cardinal. We've already had our electricians look at, and they, they're not, uh, they're not compatible. I already tried that. As for the Cardinal Pool, uh, Filtration System, um, th- this is an, an aging system that is, um, upwards of twenty-five to thirty years old. We have been having problems the last couple of years keeping, um, the, the lines, um, running properly. Um, and, um, when we took the old filtration system out of the Johnstown pool, which is identical to what this one is, um, we basically had, um, a welding company come in and weld it to, to take it apart. And there were areas that might have had, um, maybe a year, year and a half left before it would have rotted out in the bottom. And once we have any type of exposure to that, then we would have to shut the system down. Could we get another season out of it? There's a possibility that you could, but if we started up and something happens throughout the season, then we're done, the system would, would be done. And there's no guarantee though, that I could, at this time, depending on who bids on the project, whether or not the project could be done and have it installed before, um, the season starts. We're hoping that it could, but there's no guarantee, it may not be till September, October. And that's what happened in, in Johnstown. Again, because the, the company that bid on it had the lowest bid, their season, their list of projects were already large at the time. And so that's why it was done in September, October. So even if it was expected to go ahead with the project, we were still gonna potentially, may not get it in until September, October, and we would be having to take that chance, um, of it not.
Okay, so I'm gonna pick up on that argument and, and say, if we took, if we took thirty thousand out of taxation and put it to a reserve account, it would then, and, and committed ourselves to doing it in twenty twenty-one, it would be a firm twenty twenty-one project, you can start getting the, 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 you can start getting the, uh, the bids in and, and getting the, the commitments made now. And that way we could do the same as we did pre-budget approval for the truck, you could do the same for the pool filtration system. He's nodding his head, Counselor Hunter.
Go thirty-five, Mr. Mayor.
Say again?
Go fifty percent, go thirty.
I'm gonna deal in even tens here for this round. Maybe because my head won't take the fives.
So what was your, what was your ten, what was your?
Well, let's take, let's take, um-
Thirty in the reserve?
Thirty. Thirty into the reserve, well, let's, yeah, let's put thirty into the reserves and that'll, and that'll save forty against what we're trying to get.
Just, if I may for one second, just keep in mind that, uh, also in next year's twenty twenty-one budget, we have an additional sixty-five thousand dollars for the Cardinal Pool for a new liner. So just keep in mind.
Well, why, how can I keep it in mind? It wasn't there.
Yeah, it's right there in your paper.
Where?
For twenty twenty-one, I said.
Oh, yeah, but I'm only looking at one sheet.
I know, but I'm just kinda, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, you're thinking that you can spend only thirty, put thirty thousand away and use forty next year, but next year we're gonna be looking for sixty-five.
Okay, so just-
Basically between the two years.
Bring me, bring me to that sheet.
Um, it's, it's on the back, back page, second, second, sorry. Third last page on the binder.
Third last page of the binder.
I have my pool liners, sixty-five thousand. Just, just so you're, you're aware.
So six and seven?
Just so you know.
Well, what can I say, we can't?
As far, and if I-
Although, everybody that we talked to recommends that we budget four years in advance, or three years in advance, or two years in advance. Yet, and I guess maybe this is a good reason why we should, and I assume that that's why staff provided us with these green sheets, so that we would be there, um.
And if I, if I, if I may just for one sec, go back to the arena lighting issue. I mean, if you were to ask, I know obviously the one project is, is a little more expensive than the other, but if, if you were to ask me which one to pick, I would pick the lighting over the dehumidifier for now. Firstly, because we know that if the lights, if we happen to have damaged lights and we can't replace them, then we're stuck. And, um, by changing the lights, we definitely will start seeing a, uh, reduction in our electrical costs as well as we've already started to see over here, just in the six months that we've had these ones on in Spencerville.
Okay, so, so when you say, whi- which one would you pick? In other words, if you had your druthers, you would leave the lighting in and take the dehumidifier out?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, so-
I know there's a difference in costing, but realistically, if you're looking at cost savings, potentially.
Alright, so if we take the dehumidifier out, we're saving fifteen. And if we take the pool filtration, we'll take forty out of the capital, we'll put thirty into reserves. So what have I saved? Forty and fifteen. I've saved fifty-five out of taxation, is that correct? Does everybody agree with saving fifty-five out of taxation on this round in that manner? And then, uh, we've, we've still got two or three other potential items that we can look at here. So now, I'm going to the treasurer and I'm saying, where am I at? And the treasurer is gonna tell me that I need now, still to find.
Yeah, you're at one seven, and we were at one point two, we're still around five hundred thousand or so that we have to, just over five hundred, so.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna go, I'm, I'm hearing no, I'm hearing, nobody's shooting at me yet.
You're just in the first round.
And I'm just in the first round.
What, what's, what are we down to now?
About the five sixty-two.
Five sixty-two?
Yeah.
Geez, that's a long way from seven seventeen.
Well, get your axe out. Um, so now, uh, the next, I am on the staff sheet. The next bullet point. The twenty twenty Public Works Department draft, draft equipment purchases are currently fully funded by taxation. Everybody got their fingers on that? Brushhead for Ohio, Kubota mowerhead, purchase two electronic sign boards, replace a Ford one point five half, one, uh, one, one point five ton dump plow truck, tandem axle plow truck, and a subtotal four seventy-eight, all from taxation. So now I'm gonna finish reading. Does committee recommend deferring any of these purchases? That's the first question. The balance in the Public Works Reserve is projected to be four forty-eight. Now, that's assuming that we don't take any of these out of the reserve, right? What amount, if any, does committee recommend transferring out of the reserve to fund the twenty twenty equipment purchases? And the chair asks, what, if any, of these purchases does the committee re- recommend canceling?
Well, in five C-
Five C?
Yeah, the next, we're, we're in five B now, and in five C, we talk about the signage, 'cause I have question, if you're looking, if you're looking for an answer right now, I have questions about the signage, when it, when it comes up in five C. So if you were asking me if I, would I cut it, I would say possibly. So that's thirty-nine thousand. However, I wanna, I want, I have answers that I wanna.
Well, when you're looking at five-hundred-and-sixty-two that you gotta find, you'll be too, don't be.
I know.
Don't be too.
I know.
Looking for other speakers?
Well, I, I know the brushhead for the Ohio is a, a option to save a little bit, bit in contract fees, but if we're gonna buy two new trucks this year, I think that needs to be some signed for a number of years, so.
The brushhead, you mean? Fifty grand?
I would, I would concur with that as well.
I had it as an X, and I also had the sign thirty-nine thousand as an X. So there's ninety thousand.
Um, so let me follow you, fifty from the high, from the brushhead?
Thirty-nine from the.
Thirty-nine from the signs? And what was the other one?
That was it.
No, that was it, but what about the mowerhead? What's, what's with the mowerhead? Twenty-four thousand, someone fill me in?
Mowerhead, yeah, mowerhead, typically they're uh last about three years, and I believe this one was four years old or five years old.
How many?
Four or five years old.
And they usually last three?
Three, yeah.
Why do they usually last only three?
Just the heavy-duty work, they're dig, they're in ditches and so forth, so it's not just uh grass and brush they're picking up, so there's a lot of debris and 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 heavier brush that they'll, they'll.
So this is a completely new one, not a, not a band-aid?
Correct.
So we don't ha- we don't have, like, Tackerberry comes in?
Why don't, why aren't we contracting this, is I guess?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Me too.
Would the contracting be twenty-four thousand? Give you a chance, one chance, one chance.
We're replacing the head, not the whole apparatus, number one. Number two, when we look at contracting out, we're well over the the price of 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 mowing our our uh roadside um in in um one calendar year. The county tried this, and now they've gone back to it as well. So uh we have one machine, we get all our our road sides mowed as best we can. Um and uh the, the purpose is to keep this piece apparatus, this, this add-on device, onto the tractor, up to the standard that we're not repairing it every other week.
So now, when you say we're replacing the head.
Just, just the actual apparatus, the, the three-point hitch, um, uh, assembly and and hydraulics to the, to the uh mower are are, we're gonna keep and just replace that.
Oh, I see, okay. And 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 who does that replacement?
In this case, it's a Kubota, so we're stuck with um.
Wiggins.
Wiggins, Wiggins, whatever they're called, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And they're the only game in town, we, we have two to deal with, but they're owned by the same people.
There's that guy in Winchester, though.
Same guy.
Same guy, yeah.
Owned by the same people.
No, no, north of Winchester, on thirty-one.
Still the same guy?
Still the same guy.
Wiggins own all three now.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they bought up that one about two years ago, three years ago.
They gotta go into the East End of Ottawa for the playoffs.
No, you're saying that, just well, just as we're, we're here, twenty-four grand, you're saying that we're way off uh by tendering it out?
If we tender that service out, you, 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 you pay about twenty-four thousand a year for all of our roadside.
Twenty-four thousand a year?
Yeah. To the standard that we, we have in our, in our policy. Um, depending on the summer, could be three, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Well, we just barely get two.
So you said that lasts us three, we're on our fifth, right?
Uh, four.
Four?
I don't think it's five years old.
Okay, could we, uh, with the good Lord and, not one more year?
I can't keep bearings in that.
Can't keep bearings, eh?
No.
And five or six thousand.
She's so twisted.
And what's, uh, oh, yeah? And what's the repairs of bearings roughly, every time we have to?
About fifteen hundred dollars to do everything.
So two thousand.
We get the bearings for four hundred, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Never adjust the bearing.
Pods are going to, I don't know if the pods will be worn out, too.
Everything's worn out, no. We were, we were building up, welding to build it up.
Okay, so.
What about our one-point-five, or one-and-a-half-ton dump truck plow?
Yeah, why are we pla- we replacing?
Hello, somebody?
Yep, this, um, the uh old truck eleven, I call it a ton and a half, two-ton, is um, uh, it's about ready to fall apart.
Oh, don't say things like that.
Um, I, I have, I have to tell you the, the tale of the, of the tape here, is, and um, we're, we have um a plan to uh replace this truck with a slightly larger truck and be able to use this truck in small area, in small roads, uh villages, that sort of thing. Um, this would down the road, possibly alleviate the need for a replacement of an, a single-axle truck. And a truck that basically is used in the winter and not used for the rest, any other time of the year, so um, so what we wanna do is bring in a, a truck that can do places like um uh Spencerville here, Johnstown, some of John's, Johnstown's roads, uh where I live in New Exford, which that truck currently does. And um, and then up around uh some of these smaller roads in Cardinal. And that would be a new route that would be developed, and we would rejig all the other routes, so that we, we take them off the big tandem trucks that currently go with few Spencer. So uh, um, so that's why this truck is ready to go, and this is the time to make the change, if we're gonna make the change in our policy.
What e- what effect does that have on contracting?
Contract?
Well, I mean, the, the truck that services Johnstown right now, you're talking about plow truck.
Correct.
That plow truck comes from Cardinal.
Correct.
And then, I must, and my understanding is that it does Cardinal, then it goes to uh Johnstown, does Johnstown, then it goes to New Exford, does New Exford, back to Cardinal.
Um, sort of. Um, we had the truck eleven, the one we wanted to replace, the one ton and a half, goes to um New Exford, does it. And then by the time that person gets back to, to Cardinal, they, they jump on the sidewalk plow and do the sidewalk. Um, the current truck, single-axle truck that does, does um uh Johnstown, uh goes, goes straight out to Johnstown and does the Johnstown roads. And um with a combination of route rejigging, we can get a big truck in there to do the main streets, and then the little truck will come in behind and fix up all the side streets, the smaller streets.
So we got two, there's basically two, two vehicles. There's basically two vehicles assigned to snow plowing in Johnstown, Cardinal, and Exford.
Three.
Three?
I'm reduce, I'm trying to reduce it by one.
And how, so, I mean, that's a lot of back and forth to Johnstown, to Exford.
Um, it's only done once. Um, you're right, there is deadheading, um, which means that they, they come from their base and go, and go up in Cardinal and deadhead out to Johnstown. And then they go out through Johnstown, come back, and they pick up the roads such as um uh North Channel Road, um, gal, um, pick up around the dump, you know, the transfer site.
So, so what is the, what is the, what is the age of this truck? What is its mileage? Um, what are the, what are the vital statistics on this Ford one-and-a-half-ton dump plow truck we're talking about? What are, what are his vital statistics?
Give me a second, Mr. Mayor, no. Okay, the uh, uh, truck eleven is a, is an old seven, um, which we, I believe, bought in oh-nine, I think it was used. And uh, it's a five-fifty.
What's that mean?
This is just the size, model, size of the truck. Uh, we wanna take it up to a six-fifty, um, and put a proper sander on it. And uh, I think it'll still have the uh, the reversible plow. Um, it's um, in the past year, um, we've had a lot of trouble with the current sander. We've had a lot of trouble with wiring on that. Um, and um, and the engine is one of the first um diesel engines, not first diesel engine, but one of the uh diesel engines that they brought out when everybody was looking to go to uh diesel engines in this, in the early two thousands. And it, I'm, I don't know, it, my, my experience with these engines has been they, they don't last as much as.
What is it, a Gero Max?
Yeah, but it's the first one. It's one of the first Gero Max they had so much trouble with.
How many clips on it?
Uh, I can't answer that, it's got a lot, I just don't have that information right here. I'd get it for you if you wish.
What did we do for repairs last year on it?
We have any of that? Nope, sorry, I don't have that. Available, I can get that for you, but.
What's the availability on the, on the off-rental market?
Availability of the off-rental.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's a two-ton truck, they're on and off, I mean, the companies put them on one-year rentals, six-months rentals?
Oh, I understand, okay, um, I've, because there are trucks that are in snow and salt, um, you can, you can pick some up, but uh you're buying basically, either somebody leased it, didn't look after it, or um they got rid of it because they don't want that truck, so uh.
Well, you get them, you get good ones, too.
They're certainly, it's certainly an option um to look at, but I've never seen them in that size of vehicle. It certainly, uh, it, it's a crapshoot.
This really only does New Exford, though, for snow plowing, right? This vehicle, this one-and-a-half-ton? Pretty much.
Pretty much, um, it does do some roads in Cardinal.
But most of the bulk is New Exford. Probably taking snow plow on that one.
Is it the white one?
Yes.
What about contracting New Exford to Prescott? They've all got small plows. They've got all small plows on Prescott streets. Just seems we're doing an awful lot of deadheading to the far edge of our boundary, which butts right up against where they're plowing to anyway.
It's. Um, how do I answer this?
Has it been looked into?
I, I can't answer that, I don't know if it's been at the discussion table. Um, will, will we talk to Prescott? So I, I can't answer that for you. Um, it's certainly an option, uh, but it doesn't, the, the real, if we pull that out, that's fine, but it still doesn't take these big tandem trucks off of some of our smaller roads, or less, you know, like local roads in like the Spencerville or, or um Johnstown.
I know, but.
We're getting on.
But we just keep replacing these tandem axle plows. I mean, there's another one on here to replace another tandem axle plow. Later on, we're going to uh deal with a motion to replace a, a turbocharger on one of the existing plows that we're using as, that, that we're using this year as a spare. So it just seems to me that we keep buying bigger and bigger, more bigger and bigger plows, but then we say we can't use them on the smaller streets, so we need sma- smaller plows, why?
We need a, a combination, right?
I know we need a combination of both, but what we need is an efficient combination of both. Is this gonna give us that?
I believe it will give us efficiencies, Mr. Mayor, I think it's, it takes us, um, we, we, we eliminate one truck completely out of our fleet, and through this and in, in, um, it's not replaced next year. Um, and uh, we, we bring in a truck that, that actually is more efficient for more jobs of this nature, um, the, the tight plowing, the, you know, the ones where a big truck can't properly do a radius around that cul-de-sac.
Okay, so which, which truck would disappear off the fleet?
It's, it's scheduled for replacement, it's a single-axle truck eight, it's a Cardinal right now. And uh, my feeling is, is that by re- reworking the plow routes, we can downsize so that uh one out of the fleet and, and this truck can uh run through these smaller streets and, as I said, in Spencerville, Johnstown, and, and New Exford. We already do New Exford with, with a smaller truck, but um I think it's efficient, we're trying to efficientize the, the, the fleet and make sure that we go forward and still can provide the same level of service that everybody's come to expect, so. Um, it's, it's a plan, it's a, it's a thinking point um for you people, but, but uh certainly uh I've looked at it and believe we can get res- reasonable plow routes and lengths of proper plow routes and still provide the same service with, with this truck and not replacing this, one of the single axes.
Okay, so Sulfrey gave me two good arguments. Number one is one less vehicle on the fleet, and number two is less deadhead mileage. Both those understood, but it's the ninety-five grand that is holding me up. Um, and, and the fact that I'm looking at, I've still gotta get five-hundred-and-sixty-two or five-hundred-and-sixty-something cut out of this taxation, implications for taxation. Now, what does the treasurer tell me here? She tells me that the Public Works Department draft budget are currently fully funded by taxation. Does committee recommend deferring any of these purchases? So first of all, is there any, uh, is there any um appetite to defer one or the other of these six or seven items? And then she points out that the balance in the Public Works Reserve is projected at four-forty-eight. What of any does the committee recommend transferring out of the reserves to transfer any or, one or any of these? So let me tell you where I am right so far. I don't have anybody talking to deferral of one or the other of these purchases, and I don't have anybody talking to, I, I do have a couple of people talking to, um, well, yes, deferral, I've got, I've got cancellation, I've got people talking to cancellation of the brushhead for the Ohio, that's fifty.
And the signs.
And the signs, that's thirty-nine. Now, talking to transferring money from the reserves, anybody gonna talk to that?
I will.
Okay.
We've got four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in there, if we transfer a hundred-and-fifty out of that, that still leaves us roughly three-hundred thousand. That gives us, with the ninety on the other ones there, that gives us roughly two-hundred-and-forty-thousand off our taxation.
Okay, now, and so that would reduce the reserves from four-fifty to three-hundred, roughly, right?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly three-hundred? Now, now, is the trend, is the, is the um treasurer, just help me here, is that balance that you're showing me of four-forty-eight, is that after the transfers in and the transfers out?
There, that is, uh, after the transfers in, we have, in the twenty-twenty budget, we have not, as I indicated, transferring any money out of the reserve in the twenty-twenty budget.
But we're gonna transfer some in?
Right.
How much will we be transferring in?
Eighty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty.
That's a weird number.
Well, that number comes from a fifty-thousand dollar that we normally put in.
Yes.
And a debt repayment for the streetlight, um, we did an LED streetlight uh project, and we split up that money and have been transferring money into that reserve, 'cause that's where it was funded from initially. We did an LED streetlight project and we split up that money and have been transferring money into that reserve, cause that's where it was funded from initially. So it's, it's a five-year internal debt repayment that we're doing ourselves. So it came out to a funny number of thirty-eight, four fifty.
Okay, so we are gonna transfer money in, and so when Counselor Hunter recommends. Uh, transferring a hundred and fifty from the reserves to fund something here. Uh, what you're saying is that, that would then leave us with about. Three hundred in there. Roughly, is that correct?
Roughly, yep.
Okay, so Counselors Hunter's made the suggestion to transfer a hundred and fifty from reserves to this capital. Uh, and of course, I'm taking that, hundred and fifty on top of the fifty and the thirty-nine. So I, is that right? Okay, so I'm gonna take a hundred and fifty and fifty. And I'm rounding that thirty-nine up to forty, just cause I don't want odd numbers around in my head, cause you can't take it.
Two forty?
Two forty of five sixty-two, and that tells me that I'm still looking for.
Three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-six.
Thank you very much, you're quick.
Uh, it's right here.
Okay, so.
Give or take.
Give or take it all.
Yes? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I like, I, I wish we could wait another year for that little one and a half ton truck.
Okay, well, you may well get your cha- you may well get your chance, because we're not there yet. Let's go down the rest of the, let's go down the rest of this sheet here, see where we are.
Before we go, can I ask?
Get in, get in, get in.
So, um, through the chair to, to.
Well, yeah, this is a little bit more informal, yeah, go ahead.
So, so, um, just for my own clarity, uh, T eleven comes, doesn't stay on, it comes off with, with the purchase of a new one?
Mm-hmm.
As well as T eight?
T eight when it's done next year, yeah.
So, so two.
Depending on where we get the trucks.
Two, two for one, that's.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear, cause in my mind, I thought maybe you were saying T eleven would stay on afterwards? And T eight would be the one that would disappear, but.
Well, I was under the, the same impression. I thought you, I thought you had said you were gonna keep the truck around just for limited duties.
Nope, not that truck.
Not that.
Nope. Get rid of it. Limited duties is a scrapyard.
Okay, so what are we down to, I'm sorry?
Three twenty-three.
Looking for three twenty-two.
Three twenty-three.
Three twenty-three.
Yeah, three twenty-three.
Okay, now, and that, and that, uh, hundred and fifty, um. To the way I've interpreted Counselor Hunter's recommendation, would go against these six items here. So now we're down to bridges and culverts. Now, we got Ventnor Bridge, fifty-three thousand, but no impact on taxation, it's coming straight from the government gas tax. Right? And then I got the Riley Street retaining wall, which is twenty-seven-five, and it's coming straight from taxation. Now, I don't, I can't get in my mind, oh, Riley Street's in Johnstown and it's, it goes down right to the water, New Wexford.
No extra.
No extra, goes right to the water.
Correct.
I haven't seen that retaining wall, but I'm prepared to cut it without seeing it. No?
You might want to know.
Might not wanna do that?
You might not wanna do that.
No, please don't.
Oh my gosh, look at the reaction that I'm getting on the Riley Street retaining wall. I would even pay that myself, just to get a break. Take, oh, you're on. That was an offer, we accept. Offer plus acceptance, we got a contract. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can, can, can we refer back to five B? You, you, you were doing really great, we're working our way down that list, maybe if we can continue on that list before we move to, to bridges and culverts?
Oh, I'm not done? Wait a minute, I'm just going down the sheet here.
Yeah.
I'm going down the funding analysis sheet.
Yes, we, we, we.
Oh, you want me to go back to that sheet?
If you could.
Oh, well, I mean. What sauce for the goose is gravy for the gander? What's, whatever that means.
You must have a book of these.
Pumps it, pumps up in his computer, the date.
The, the twenty-twenty draft capital budget includes three roads. Miller, Chambers and Cookman Road to be surface treated for a total of three thirteen, seven fifty. Does committee, three thirteen, seven fifty, right? Does committee recommend reinstating the gravel to surface treatment program, yes or no? The balance in the Public Works Reserve is projected four forty-eight, well, it's now three hundred. What amount, if any, does committee recommend transferring out of the reserves to fund the twenty-twenty gravel to surface treatment program? Well, there's only three hundred left in. So, what, what amount, what amount are you taking out of the uh, gas tax to fund the gravel to surface treatment? Only a hundred and two. Is that correct?
Uh, that, that particular column is a combination of OSIF formula based as well as gas tax.
It is.
So it's outside funded, uh, revenues.
Okay, so, all of these, and Latimer, I guess we're pretty much committed to, because that's the one with. Uh, and it's a hundred and two, right?
Correct.
That's, that's the one with North Grand Paul, yes.
Yeah, and we're committed to it. So Miller Road West, ninety-three, five, Chambers Road, two oh four, Cookman Road, sixteen, two. What about just taking Chambers Road out? Trouble is, then our, then our surface treatment program is pretty much wiped out.
That's correct.
Why was, how did Chambers Road, uh, get on that list?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, we went through originally back five years ago and developed this plan and. We came up with a list of roads which we thought were in priority order to, to surface treat over, that were ready, that had the platform. Um, and, and uh, could be easily changed from gravel to surface treatment. Okay, so Chambers was always on that list from way back. Um, and it's still, basically, we add some gravel, reconfirm ditching. And then we can surface treat, so it'd be very similar to other projects like this we've done. Um. Chambers, uh, Cookman is sort of out of the way. Back in the area where we don't have any gravel roads, um, and with Latimer going this year as well. There's no gravel roads in the northeast.
So that's, that's not exactly right, cause Campbell Road runs right up. And, and it was on last year, that's what I questioned the last time, why did we switch, switch Campbell Road off to go to Chambers Road when we're. Last year, we were talking of no researches, go Campbell Road and, and because Cookman was right at the end, that we just. Do that little bit of a dead end and, and road.
Yeah, cause if you gotta run your grade or up chamber.
Right off across the end.
Yeah. Campbell, it's Campbell.
Um, Campbell Road was on, it, it didn't survive last year. Um, it was, it was removed and this is the whole resurrection of that.
Okay, but couldn't Campbell replace Chambers?
Uh, it's much longer and uh, therefore more expensive.
Chambers last year was two sixty?
Campbell, Campbell Road last year was two sixteen, Cookman was twelve five.
Okay, um. See, I'm, so in answer to the question that the, um, the C A O has brought me back to. Um, I mean, what, the, the question was, what amount of any does committee recommend transferring out of the reserve to fund the twenty-twenty? Gravel to surface treatment program? And we've now determined as a result of the previous discussion, that there's only three hundred left in there, right? So, am I, uh, reading the table correctly when I say that there's not much appetite to transfer more money out of that reserve?
I think if we move on down one more segment, we go to the. Cost of engineering for the Rooney and, and Cedar Grove. Road there, we just did half the two hundred thousand instead of the four hundred thousand, we're down, we'll be down to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, I'm quite prepared to. Tax for a hundred and twenty-three thousand increase, so.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Let's follow, uh, let's follow Counselor Hunter's suggestion here for a minute. Um, and, and so he's, he's leading me to the last bullet point on the treasurer's, on the treasurer's note. Draft capital budget includes four hundred thousand for engineering, survey costs and other costs. Related to the potential upgrade of Rooney, Jordan and Cedar Grove Road. And those are all currently fully funded by taxation. Does committee recommend a reduction in the scope of this project to only one road, Counselor Hunter says, let's reduce the scope. Does the committee recommend funding this project from reserve, if so, which reserve? So what Counselor Hunter is saying is cut it in half, so that would be four hundred plus two hundred. Uh, which would, which would reduce it to two hundred. And which road would you recommend then, Counselor?
I reckon cutting out the Rooney Road, we're talking about, about. Putting a big favor in for Cedar Grove Road, so they can go well for a bit if they're looking to say, well, they're already, they're engineering to build the road.
Good argument, yeah. So we applied for Rooney Road off of that too, though, didn't we, with that infrastructure grant? Uh, so this minute now, so Counselor Hunter was speaking, so go ahead. Wasn't that infrastructure, uh, part of, Rooney Road was part of that?
We were.
Cedar?
Yeah, we were denied that grant.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that grant never came through. Okay, so, uh, uh, let's just talk to Counselor Hunter's suggestion here right now. To reduce that engineering and survey costs to two hundred, concentrate only on Cedar Grove Road. As, as a way of, of, um, shall I say, enhancing our application.
Mr. Mayor.
Did you wanna jump in?
Well, if, if you don't, if you don't mind, maybe, and I don't like jumping around a little bit, but, but five E. Speaks a little bit more to the Jordan Rooney Cedar Grove Road reconstruction.
Five what?
Five E.
Oh, the, that section of our.
Yes, with, with some information items.
Okay, what does it say?
Well, it, it just gives, it just gives the committee a little, a little opportunity to get a better understanding of what's being proposed. On that and whether, you know, whether, whether, you know, two hundred is the number or one fifty or.
Okay, so there's nothing in five E though, that would lead me to believe that, um. Just concentrating on Cedar Grove would be two hundred. It, two hundred and, at this point, becomes just a number.
Correct.
Right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So, I think what we'll do is, let's just concentrate on the, on the number concept for now. And uh, see where that leaves us. And maybe in the interim period of time between this meeting and the next, we might be able to get a better idea of how that would, uh, how that would influence. What, what engineering and surveying we could get done for two hundred. Okay, so is, is there any further debate on Counselor Hunter's suggestion here? Okay, I hear none, so I'm going to use, uh, that two hundred to take that off the three twenty-two. And now I know I'm looking for one twenty-two. And this is cut in half.
Keepers, if you take my ninety-five thousand dollar truck off, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and I'll tell you.
Well, not, I'm serious.
No, no, and you know what? The, I'm not, uh, I'm not averse to taking your ninety-five thousand dollar truck off. Um, but right now, I got a promise, and I, and I'm gonna get it written in blood following the meeting. That by buying that one truck, we take two off. That's a strong argument for me. I'll tell you, it's, when I get somebody who wants to reduce the number of assets on our asset management. I'm, I'm all in favor of it, that's why, and I'm gonna say it again, you know what? I mean, more and more and more towards trying to, to put more stuff on contract, because. Keeping the asset management list to as skinny as we can keep it is a really coming thing. Because the province, first of all, the province is going to demand, and I think we're pretty well positioned, matter of fact. I might just divulge here just for a minute, because I see that there's a, a review of our asset management plan coming up on February the twenty-sixth or so. And we're gonna have the consultant in to talk to us about it, about our asset management plan. And I think we're very well positioned to meet the, the province's deadline, I think the deadline is, what, can you help me out with the deadline?
The first deadline is twenty-twenty-one.
July twenty-one.
July twenty-twenty-one, and the next deadline is twenty-twenty-three. And I, I believe that we're in a position that we basically meet the twenty-twenty-three.
Yes.
Now.
Because we've, because we've done so much work and it's been so robust. Yes, but, I mean, you'd be surprised of how the criteria has changed.
We started, we started eight years ago, August.
And there's no question, the province is looking at these asset management plans now, every time you file any kind of an application. Those asset management plans are gonna be looked at. Okay, so let's go back, uh, because Counselor, um, Counselor Dillawalt wants to talk about that truck and. Counselor, I wanna give you a chance to get your ore in here, give us the convincing argument.
Well, I, I just don't, for, for what it's used for, just doing, uh. Um, New Wexford, I mean, I, I just can't see it if we can save ninety-five thousand for one more year. And maybe even, you know, I can agree with you, Mr. Mayor, maybe take a crack at Prescott, continuing to, uh, go down there and do, uh, New Wexford for us.
Um, I'm gonna give, uh, the staff an opportunity to respond here. Now, Mr. Guest, I, 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 I invited you to jump in, so I'm gonna invite you to jump in again.
I, I, go ahead, Dave.
I, I'm just wondering if it would serve a better purpose that at the next Public Works Environmental Services Committee. Let staff prepare a report with respect to the, to the plower efficiencies and, and what this plan will actually provide in the end.
And please, okay, could I go one more step? And could we please maybe have a price, have Prescott do New Wexford for us at that meeting?
What, what, what I would say is, we, we will attempt.
Okay.
In, in all fairness, that's, that's out of our control.
Yeah, no, no, I, okay, if you could bring that, if.
I don't know, if Prescott has the equipment to take on any more roads, they seem to have a hard time getting around the streets as they are, we could add many to it, so.
Okay.
So, so my, my suggestion would be for now, leave, leave that ninety-five in.
You take it off, you said?
No, leave it in.
I think one, one thing here too, if I recall right, truck eleven is used year-round a lot.
It is, it has their sweeper on it.
The sander comes off and it's used year-round, where this truck's gonna be used year-round too, it's not gonna be, it's not just used for plowing New Wexford, it's used for it the whole year.
Oh, believe me, I know, I see it enough times.
The new one is used?
The new one will be used.
Let's, this, we have truck eleven, which is the one and a half ton, it's used year-round, it has a sweeper on it in the, in the summer. It takes small loads of gravel to the park, sort of topsoil, uh, we use it for, for blocking, for, for construction projects. Truck eight is the single axle, uh, nine, uh, two thousand and one, I believe it is. That is on the books for next year's replacement, that's the one I, I'm not gonna replace in this scheme of things. As well, the old truck eleven will go out the door and, and we'll have one truck for two. And we're pretty confident we can make the routes work.
So truck eleven will be gone with the new one?
Yeah, probably traded, sold, scrapped, whatever.
Yeah, right, and truck eight's gonna be gone next year.
Well, truck eight will be gone as soon as the new truck eleven comes in, we'll get rid of it then.
But, so truck eleven will be gone and truck eight will be gone.
Yes, sir.
With the new one.
Yes, sir.
And you will sign that out of your, with your blood.
I pretty much, I've stated it here, I'm pretty sure that it's.
So, so if I'm hearing you right, you're already reducing next year's budget, which is the replacement of T eight by fifty thousand dollars.
Try a, and that's the other thing, is it, is a damn, single axle truck is damn near as expensive as, as a, as a, uh, it's only forty thousand dollar difference between a tandem and a single axle.
So that's taking that off of next year's.
Next year's request.
Plan though already, right?
Okay, so, uh, I'll tell you. So, so the chair's looking for direction here right now. Uh, we've been through item five A on the agenda. And we've got it down to the point now where the differential between last year's capital and this year's capital is now one twenty-two instead of seven seventeen. So that's where the differential rests at this point, uh, three thirty on the afternoon of Monday, July, January twenty-seven. So what I'd like to do with the indulgence of the table, I'd like to go through the rest of the agenda because there are several other items on here that staff is looking for direction. I'd like to go through the rest of them and then see where we stand as we finish up that agenda. And if necessary, come back to item five A. So I'm taking my briefing note, setting it aside temporarily. And I'm looking now at item five B, except I can't find it. Yeah, there it is.
We just completed five B.
I think I just completed five B, yes, right, I'm looking for five C, aren't I? And five C is the one about the electronic sign for purchase. And unless I missed my guess, that question was answered. Okay, so now I'm going to, I'm going to fi, oh, there was one question I had on my briefing note. Because we did an electronic sign rental last year. And it seemed to me, I know this is maybe a sore point, we're going to ask it. Seems to me there was a question with missing wheels or something. That was one of my questions.
I, I, I believe that was day two of the, of the rental.
Yeah.
The, the, yes, the, the wheels went, uh, missing.
Can I hear this story? I've never heard this.
Me neither.
I think you just did, that was it.
Could I, could I, could I ask a question? The person, the person that we rent, the company that we rented the unit from, did they not either take the wheels off themselves and secure them? Or did they not supply locks for the wheels? That would be my question.
Anyway, so what, what was the final result here? I'll, I'll ask the CIO, then there's only one answer, and believe me, sir, whatever you answer, I will not question the answer, I'm just curious. So you can say whatever you want, the staff will not contradict you, I guarantee you.
And what exactly is the question?
Okay, the question is very precisely put, is, uh, what hap, no, I can't say what happened to the missing wheels. How was the issue of the missing wheels on the rented sign dealt with?
As an expense item in the capital project.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that answer. Good nerve of them guys. Rap five D, Latimer Road surface treatment. And I think we dealt with that, and I know that that'll, that'll eliminate gravel roads at the north end of the township. And I know that the residents of Latimer Road will be very interested. And, uh, they, they keep in close touch with me, uh, on a regular basis. Now I'm at operations, which is five E, and the staff is going to take a look and see where two hundred uh, gets us with regard to engineering and surveying, et cetera, there. And now I'm at five F, which is Safford Road. And Safford Road is one of the ones that was on the previous list. Well, that was, you know, Safford Road was a total of seventy-seven thousand five hundred for surface treat. Now, is it surface treating or just?
It's asphalt.
It's resurfacing.
Oh, it's asphalt, asphalt. Uh, seventy-seven five gets us asphalt for that whole thing?
It's only four, four and fifty meters. It's from Browsfield. It's the existing asphalt from Browsfield Road.
Browsfield Road, yeah.
Up to, I always say it wrong, Hadd, Hadd, Haddell?
Oh, just that piece?
Just that piece, it's just because it, it's shot. I mean, uh, got to take a load of, uh, of coal patch in there shortly to fix it up.
Okay, so then from Browsfield Road south, over the top of the hill, remains as is?
Down to Kane, yes.
Down to Kane? Oh.
This is fixing up an existing condition that, that has run its life expectancy.
Okay, now, all of these others on the resurfacing of roads, all of these others, are they all a full, uh, asphalt treatment?
If they're under the resurfacing.
Well, Blair Hudson Judy Place Ventnor and Safford.
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's where we're using up all our grant money.
Yeah.
Should be Ventnor on there too, if you say.
Yeah, Ventnor's on there, and Ventnor's the big one for two sixty-three. Okay, so what is the issue here on this one? What was the issue on the?
On the Safford Road resurfacing? Wasn't so much an issue, it was just a, a further explanation to, to, to help with committee.
Oh, okay, all right. So it survived the first round?
Yes.
So the fact that it survived the surf, first round means that everybody read the briefing note and, and nobody had any objections. That's the way I.
That's, that's the, the way that I'm looking at it as well.
All right, so now, um, now we're back to five A. We're a hundred and twenty-two short. Uh, Counselor Hunter's prepared to tax for it. And I, I want to see the larger picture now. I want to see the larger picture that results from where we are. And maybe the, maybe the, the treasurer can help us just quickly. And let's just see if the treasurer can give us the information in really summarized form. In this way. I'm going back to the revenue sheet. Excuse me, just while I fumble around here a bit. And the revenue sheet shows me revenues of seven million, five ninety-five, five twenty. And I'm seeing operational expenses of six, two, one, three, four, one, four. Operations, net operations. What am I now seeing for capital?
Your, uh.
Net, net capital due to taxation, due from taxation?
It's now down to one, two, eight, six, eight seventy-five.
One, two, eight, six?
Yes.
Eight, seven, five?
Eight seventy-five.
Okay, so then if I add those two numbers.
But you, you have to remember that we decided to put thirty thousand dollars into reserves. So up underneath capital transfers to reserves, we need to increase that three thirty to three sixty. There was an, another subsection.
Which is not really operations, it's a transfer to reserves.
Right, but it's a section on, just above the capital section, there is a section for, for transfers to reserves.
Yes.
Isolating those, that needs to be added back.
Okay, so I'm adding thirty there.
Yep.
So my, so I'm adding three numbers now, is that correct? Six, two, one, three, four, one, four. Thirty thousand trans, an additional thirty thousand transferred to reserves?
Uh, so you should probably do the original three thirty plus the thirty, so that's three sixty.
Three sixty?
Right.
Okay, yes, I see where your day came in.
Plus the one, two, eight, six.
Right. So now what is the total of those three numbers?
I don't, I don't have the, the operating number with me right now, sir.
Six, two, one, three, four, one, four.
Six, two.
One, three.
Four, one, four.
You with me, Counselor? Counselor Hunter, are you with me here?
Yeah.
Where am I?
One, one, two, five, three, six, eight, six.
You with me, you with me?
Yeah.
You with me?
Yep.
Seven, so the, so the expenditures are seven eighty, seven, eight, six, zero?
Two, eight, nine.
Two, eight, nine.
Yep.
So we're still in a deficit. We're still have a need for two sixty-five, one fifty-six.
Okay, so let me get that right again. I'm doing the subtraction right now, and I'm getting that becomes a, that becomes a five, and that becomes a ten. And that becomes a nine, and that becomes a one, that becomes a seven, minus four. This becomes a seven. Six. Do I need two sixty-four?
Two sixty-five.
Yep.
Two sixty-five?
Two sixty-five.
Okay, now, in order for me to get two sixty-five, what's the tax implication?
We're about fifty, uh, fifty-five for every, uh, one percent increase.
So if I divide the two sixty-five by fifty-five, what have I got?
Four point eight.
I'm over six.
Two sixty-five?
Four point eight.
Four point eight?
Eighty-five.
Four point eight.
Four point eight? On top of phase in, on top of phase in. Talking about the taxpayer feeling it in the pocket. So where are we?
Four point eight percent.
Pretty rich.
If you did two percent last year, you would have been only at two point eight.
Now, pulling out of my book, if, if pigs could fly.
Yeah, here we go. If, if I may, do, and, and this may be putting you on a bit of, a bit of a spot, but, but with, uh, county's budgeting, do we have any indication on, on whether they're going to be holding the line with, uh, with their taxes?
Oh, I didn't report that yet. Oh, I, I've told staff. I'm sorry, I, I haven't reported this yet. But at the county council meeting last week on Thursday, so first there was a county council meeting out of the way, and then a budget meeting. So at the budget meeting, final look at the budget, and we approved the budget. And as a result of the approval of the budget, the county tax rate will reduce by point three percent. So that's point three percent. Now that, I don't have the figures in front of me of what that represents for dollars in the county pockets, but it's a big number. And we also know that the province has reduced the education tax rate. I don't know what the percentage reduction is in the provincial education tax rate, but it's slightly reduced. Because the province always adjusts its education rate to take it, to take full advantage of the growth, uh, in assessment. So.
Sorry, I think, I think the treasurer has that.
Oh, you have that?
Yes, the province has released that. It's, it's roughly again the same five percent they've reduced since twenty nine, two thousand and nine.
So five percent reduction in the education tax rate. Now, so our, our, um, our tac, our taxpayers will see a point three percent reduction in their county rate and a five percent reduction in their education rate. But if we go up four point eight percent on our township rate, it will be noticed, believe me. It will be noticed and it will be felt. And I'm, you know, I'm not saying that we need to, that we need to land on this today. I don't think we need to land on this today because, you know, I'm, I'm still going back. I'm still going back to what our, and we have not looked at our, in detail, at our township operating budget. And our township operating budget, as, as we've seen it so far, and we haven't looked at it in detail, is six million, two thirteen, four, one, four, compared to five million, three forty-five actual in twenty nineteen. And what I'm suggesting as a way forward is that we leave this at this point and, and, and charge staff with the, uh, exercise of, um, helping us find a way out of this. Very nice, kind words, Mr. Mayor. Uh, without providing a lot of direction. But taking their cue from county.
We can't reduce our rate again, Ms. Sheriff.
No, I don't think we can.
No.
No, I agree.
I think, Ms. Counselor Hunter's correct, we should have increased and taken advantage of the school board credit last year. So, you know, I think we've got to look at a two, three percent minimum increase. Uh, I looked at one point, two point six six would actually bring us back to our twenty eighteen overall tax rate. If we did a two point six six.
So will a two point six six, it, it, it won't get us to this four point eight?
No.
Where will it get us?
It will bring us back to the original tax rate we had in twenty eighteen. When we, when we didn't increase and the school, the county didn't increase and the school board or the county or the province dropped, we actually dropped our tax rate from our twenty eighteen tax rate went down to our twenty nineteen tax rate. So our overall, the overall tax rate.
Okay, and I, and you know what? I got no problem with bringing it back up, and I'll tell you why. Because by reducing our rate in twenty eighteen, we affected people's taxes ongoing into the future. If we bring it back up, all we're doing is starting it.
Bring it back to the.
We're starting from a lower point, coming up again, and that's fair game. Uh, so, um, so the way I see it right now is the, the bridge that we have to cross is between your two point six six and four point eight. Is that?
Yeah.
Fair enough?
We're, we're getting there for sure.
Yeah, so, um, okay, so that's the bridge we have to cross. Does anybody have any comments?
So ultimately, that two point one four that we're talking about, really, I mean, you could liken that to the reduction of the thirteen percent.
No, where's the two point one four coming?
In OMPF funding, right?
One ten, we lost in.
One ten, so it's thirteen percent though of, of what it was. So if we're, if you're saying two point six six brings us back to where we were for twenty eighteen, and we're already at four point eight, it's the difference between the two is two point one four. And ultimately, two point one four is, is.
The OMPF.
It's the OMPF.
It's the OMPF money, right, which, which we knew we were going to.
Oh, good analysis, that's correct, that's good analysis.
Then one, if I might, one other question? And I'm, I have notes on this from last time, that, that twenty twenty, uh, OSIF money was already one ninety-one. You already knew that in advance of the, of the announcement, so that wasn't anything to get excited about. That was, was money that you already had for stable funding.
Yeah, we had seen that, that number before.
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on. I had it written as that, but I got slightly excited there.
Didn't, didn't we get another one, Mr. Mayor, a hundred ninety-four thousand last week?
Yeah, that's the one we're talking.
One we already had.
Well, that's the one?
We already.
Now, the other thing that we had last year is we had a doubling of our gas tax money. Is there any signals at all about that? No, and I, and I didn't hear any talk about it at the conference either. Although, although there was a number of, um, there were a number of municipalities that were talking to that and in terms of like, if you can do it once, why can't you continue it? A number of them that were talking like that, but never, anywhere did I hear any sign that, from AMO or anybody else, that it was a potential or a possibility. Okay, so any other comments? Okay, so any other comments?
Mine would be a question of my fellow council. In December, we had, you know, the ad hoc meeting for the river, riverfront development. And I really don't want to see that can kicked down the road. You know, we've been talking about it at committee level on the C D C for, for four years. We had an open, open house on it, and before I was on council, and now we've had an open house in December of last year. But I don't see any reflection in the budget, other than thirty thousand dollars for Cardinal docks. And I haven't, we haven't heard a report back from that committee for any ask of any dollars. So with nothing in the budget, and other than the Cardinal docks, can we expect to see something coming, coming forward? Or should there be something in this budget that, that we're considering? I'm just concerned that we're going to be another year down the road without really any development of the new docks.
I can help you out there, deputy. We did have a meeting today. Going forward, we're going to take the plans back to Mr. McFarland. And we're going to be getting quotations of price of the East End up to the low ground for twenty twenty.
If I may, Councilor Dilawah, there, there are some significant grant funding opportunities available for that kind of work through rural economic development as well as E O D P. So the reason that, well, two reasons that they haven't, that work is not included in this year's budget. One is we don't know the quantum, we have to, we have to establish that. But the other is that, that we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to get some grant money to start that work in twenty twenty and potentially finish it, not finish it. But it is intended to be a ten-year project, but to move forward this year.
Okay, these grants are never, these grants are never hundred percent grants, you always have to match or provide. So will the thirty thousand that we've got in this year's budget provide enough leverage for the grant applications?
Again, we haven't got the quantum, so we don't know, quite frankly, that we don't have a good answer.
But we have some leverage.
Yes, I think we do, and I think there's some money within the economic development area that, that will help fund this if, if we get some grant money. And it's just going to be baby steps, but it's, it's not lost. And I mean, you know, I recognize the deputy mayor's point about not getting reports back, but let's not forget that we haven't had any meetings.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm just more concerned, sorry if I'm saying. Just that, A, there's no ask in, in this budget that we're, you know, discussing, and, and B, hold on for one sec, let me finish. You know, during the S D R on January sixth, we were specifically told, because we're a thousand dollars under taxation per household, that the odds of us actually getting grants until we increase taxation aren't really good. So to hang a project that I think a lot of us are very supportive of, on the only, the possibility of grant funding worries me a little bit. It's been five years to get to where we are, that I've been involved now, to this project, and I really don't want to see it, you know, six, seven, and eight down the road. I'd like to see, you know, some, some, a little bit more aggressiveness to that.
And if I may, again, councilor, the point well taken on the grants, but the grant, the type of grant that, that we can pursue for this kind of, this kind of project is not dependent on the same things as our infrastructure funding grants for roads and water and sewer. It's, it's really related to active living, economic development, sort of the softer services, if I could put it that way. And, and we're not as dependent on our overall big picture, because the grants aren't big dollars. We're talking potentially fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we still have this bridge, two point six to four point eight. Wish, I wish I could foresee a different kind or another kind of announcement. Really interested in that gas tax, I was kind of hoping there might have been some indications of some movement there, but I don't see or hear any. So we've got a ridge between the two point six six percent increase, which the treasurer is already, I'm not going to say you're using it, but it takes a two point six six percent increase in the tax rate to bring us back even with twenty eighteen.
Eighteenth rate.
Yeah. Okay. So can you, can you put together then another presentation which would show that additional revenue coming in? I'm really hesitant to, to go much above two point six six percent increase. Because, I mean, people are going to feel phase in too. And I forget what phase in is for our township on the, on the hundred and fifty thousand or, on the median home. What is phase in for, what is the phase in effect on our medium home, median, not median, median home?
One of the previous presentations I had provided to council or committee before was that in this last, in this four-year cycle, we only saw about fifty percent of our homes in the whole of the township saw any increase in the phase in.
That's correct.
So there's only, there's only about forty, I think it was like forty-three percent were actually going to see it. On average, the, the phase in was around two, two hundred and fifty dollars to two thousand dollars was the increase over the four years.
That's on assessment?
On assessment. So it's a, what I'm trying to suggest is that, that the increase in assessment on the majority of homes was very minor. You know, they're looking at between, you know, I think there was only maybe seven percent of the homes that were actually had a, had a bigger than ten thousand dollar increase in their assessment over the four-year cycle. So most of the homes are only seeing small incremental increases in their assessment. So I could, I could certainly do some more calculations and bring back some, some examples on some of the homes and medians and cities.
Yeah.
That has any bearing on.
And I forget what a median home, what the median, what the median value is in our township, that's the midway point. I forget what that, what that value is, but.
It was one ninety-seven, it has certainly creeped up there a little bit more than one ninety-seven.
A little bit more than one ninety-seven?
Yeah, just a little bit more. I, I would probably put us closer to the two hundred thousand as an average.
Okay, so what, what, what effect is the two point six on the two, on the two hundred thousand dollar home?
Right off the top of my head, I don't have that calculation, but I certainly can prepare a report for our next budget meeting so that you can see kind of the impacts of, of that type of an increase to get us back to our twenty eighteen number.
Okay, well, let's see what that is. And if that effect
Comfortable.
is maybe not that bad, maybe we can go a bit above the two point six. What's your thought here?
Still think you got to get up, we got to catch up. You want to catch up, you better catch up this year, not, not wait if you want to reelect it and do it in the last year of your term. If you went two percent every year, and kept that two percent or two and a half percent every year, we'd never be in this trouble.
Jeez, I've heard those arguments before. So Greg, as long as you keep your base down, I don't mind the base going down, come back up again. Help the taxpayer when you can. Remember, I mean, as you go through these capital items, there's, I mean, you're never going to be finished doing, replacing and rebuilding capital. Your home wasn't built in a day, and you're not going to fix it in a day. So capital can always be delayed. As you delay it, you change your asset management schedule to reflect that, but it can always be delayed.
And so your operating budget as well.
Yeah, no question.
Which affects your tax rate.
Yeah, go ahead.
Definitely. At, at two, or at four point eight even, we're, we're offsetting an increase in, or a decrease of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And we're really contributing towards something that we all felt passionate about, which was surface, gravel to surface treatment program. And we're replacing a, a capital item possibly that will reduce our budget costs for next year. I mean, ultimately, we've already started planning ahead, and the reductions that we're making today are actually looking even better and better for next year's process. So without having a lot more cuts, while I'm not much of a tax increase kind of guy, this one isn't, it's not all that hurt to stomach.
Where do the other two stand?
So you're, deputy mayor, you're sort of indicating we stay with the four point eight?
No, 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 I think there's still good work to be done, and, and I'm disappointed that, you know, I mean, I think I've made that clear, that there isn't more aggressive ask for, for the river project, we're relying upon grants. So, but, I mean, I, I originally said between two and four percent, so, so we're pretty darn close to what I thought, and that's absorbing the two percent that, that we're, that we're taking in, in cut to O M P F. So we're in better shape than I anticipated.
My, my feeling was three point five.
Where are you, Councilor Dilawah? I'm like Mr. Hunter. Mr. Mayor, we fought with this last year. That's our job. We should have, we should have gave them a little hit last year, we would be in this position, I'm sorry. Well, don't say that, you don't know that. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Taxation never ends. Okay, so.
I, I also feel we've got to make up a bit of.
Okay, so.
But now, if you said point three percent on.
Oh, no, that's the county tax rate. It's county tax rate.
But that's going to make a difference too. That in our, our school tax.
Well, county tax, county tax rate, the, the county take is only about forty percent of the total take, isn't it?
Thirty-one percent.
Thirty-one percent of the total take, so.
Seven thirty last year. Seven hundred and thirty dollars last year.
Yeah, well, that's on, seven hundred and thirty dollars on what assessment?
Hundred ninety-seven.
On a hundred, the, the median home then.
Right.
Okay, so.
So reduces it to thirty-seven ninety-one roughly, with the school tax in there.
Well, the, I mean, I don't have that chart in front of me, is that, was that in our previous book?
It's last year, yeah.
Last year's book?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't.
But that's all I'm saying is, it's going to be about thirty-seven dollars difference on a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollar home. With, with the education tax bill being cut five percent, and does that, does that sound right?
It sounds, sounds reasonable, I'm just trying to recall some of the calculations I recently did on, on, on some, because I've, I've taken those, those tax rates and adjusted them. And I've been trying to, you know, look at ours in comparison to bring us back up to various total tax rates. And, and, yeah, I think I've also applied a tax, a tax rate difference, and I think it's about thirty-something dollars or something like that. On that, on that median property.
Well, because if that number is accurate, I mean.
That sure helps.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if that, if that number is accurate that you're giving me, I mean, I, I think we're in the ballpark here. Yeah, yeah.
I think we all get hung up too much on percentages.
Yeah, you're right about that. Yeah, you're right about that, yeah, you're right about that. And I think, the big thing is, is that, and the treasurer has pointed it out, about forty percent of our homes didn't take any phase in from the last, from the last base year. But I think, I think there's going to be major changes, because we're now in a new base year, January one, twenty twenty.
This is the final year of our, of our assessment.
Yeah, yeah, we're in the final year of the last base year. But, but twenty twenty-one is going to be the first year of phase in on the new base. And it's every four years, right? Do you know what they told us at the, at the Roman meeting? In some sections of Ontario, they specifically mentioned Kitchener Waterloo area, the assessment base residential will increase by forty percent. The assessment base. Yeah.
We're going for three hundred thousand, we're going for six hundred five.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so I think what we're going to do, I think we're going to leave this for now, and you're going to bring us back a bit, a big picture, okay? And can you give us, instead of just your two point six, give us something like three, four, and five, and then we'll see where we stand? And, and give us the impact, give us the impact, not just on the median home, but give us the impact on the. Yeah, a couple of different property ranges. Okay, so now, I guess we're still, I've still got an agenda to follow here, don't I? So I'm at item number six on the agenda, question period. Are there any questions from the public? I don't see any. And item number seven on the agenda, adjournment, chair is looking for a motion to adjourn. Councilor Dilawah, sexy, and Councilor Hunter again. Those in favor, carry.